The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, October 11th, 2016. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be main standing.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight with praise and thanksgiving on our hearts.
We humbly ask you, Heavenly Father Jesus, to just grant this council tonight the ability, Heavenly Father Jesus, to make the decisions that's best for this whole community. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that we have a community that you've given to us, and we just ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that we're able to provide for it in the manner that would be greatly honored to you. We ask you, Heavenly Father Jesus, to just uplift them, encourage them, Heavenly Father. So many times, Heavenly Father Jesus, we don't understand the pressure and what they have to go through when they're making the tough decisions, Heavenly Father, that affects each one of us. But we know with your guidance that, Heavenly Father Jesus, those decisions will be made. We ask you to bless the staff, bless each employee, bless each person in this community. And, Heavenly Father Jesus, bless this great United States that you've given us. It seems that we in turmoil today in perilous times, but we know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you have everything under control, and we thank you, and we praise and worship you for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Janine Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There'll be no agenda changes tonight. Conflict of interest, any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations. The first one, proclamation Lights On After School for October 21st, 2016. And is Angela, is that you? Okay, Angela Bailey Gabrielle.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor O'Brien and council members, community members, of course. I'm Angela Bailey Gabrielle, and I'm the After School Program Advisor at Mesa Verde Elementary. I've been in Riverbank quite a while, so I'm excited to be here to announce that we will be having our Lights On event again this year. And Lights On, just briefly, is something that we've participated in for about 10 years, and it is a nationwide event. And we, it's a time where we can really showcase After School and what it means to our community, because it is very important to many of our parents, especially our working parents. So it's a day for the kids to have fun, it's a day for the staff to see the kids enjoying After School and just what we are able to offer. So before I steal anybody's thunder, I'm going to go ahead and let the kids do their presentations that they have all written for you guys. You guys are going to have to come up, okay?
Hi, my name is Hector Jimenez. I am a fourth grader at California Avenue. After school means to me that students bond their friendship to each other, and bond their ability when they get hurt, they bond. They bond their friendship so much when they get hurt, and then the leaders help it so that, so the students may feel better or, and would have less pain.
You need the stool? Go up on the stool. There you go.
My name is Georgia. I'm in fourth grade at Mesa Verde Elementary School. After school means to me to learn all four agreements and apply them to life. I want all the students to know all four agreements. I've been in the after-school program almost five years. I love the teachers because they help me with my homework and take care of me and give my mom a chance to work. So as you can see, the ASP is really helpful for all of us.
Hello, my name's Daniel Torres at Mesa Verde, and I'm in fourth grade at Mesa Verde Elementary School. The after-school program means to me that we could learn the four agreements, which are being safe, being respectful, being responsible, and especially having fun. And I want to show how important after school is to Riverbank. As you can see, after school could teach you more than you think.
Hello, my name is Sophia Julie Sanchez Nash. I am in the fourth grade. I attend RRA After School Program. After School Program is fun and safe. I like when we play sports such as soccers. I feel safe because the leaders make me feel that way.
Hello, my name is Alexi Novella Bor. The grade that I am in is fourth grade. I attend the Riverbank Language Academy After School Program. The After School Program is important to me because I could spend more time with my friends and the art activities and free play, and I definitely love tennis. And I feel safe when I'm there because the leaders make me feel that way. One reason that the leaders make me feel safe is because they take care of me, and the second reason that the leaders make me feel safe is because they help us if we get hurt. That's why I like After School Program.
I believe After School is important because it gives children the ability to get help with their homework during After School. Each leader provides us with the material that each child needs, and Riverbank, over 400 students are safe every day because they attend the After School Program. In ASP, we practice lockdowns and fire drills to keep us safe. ASP also provides opportunities to go on field trips. We host ceremonies and events like Science Night and Lights On. These activities allow for all of our families to participate and accomplish new things. At the end of the year, the After School Program provides opportunities to donate to the homeless. These are some of the reasons I believe After School is important to me and other participants. Thank you for letting me share this with you.
If we have your name, please.
Hector Jimenez.
Thank you, Hector.
You're welcome.
Lights On has been happening for 17 years nationwide and 10 years in Riverbank.
Hello. Lights On is a celebration for the four agreements and a celebration for kids to learn their four agreements. And to have fun, and Lights On.
So now, I would like to invite you to our 10th Annual Lights On Celebration on Friday, October 21st, 2016, at California Avenue School from 3:30 to 5:30. We would really love to see you there.
So these students presented at our school board meeting last week Tuesday as well, and I just want to point out that all the words that they were reading or that they spoke, those were all their words. We gave them just a quick topic of, you know, okay, you're going to talk about Lights On, you're going to talk about what we're doing in After School, and you're going to do the invite, but they wrote down everything. And so those are their words. It's definitely something that we're proud of, to have students in our After School Program like this that are willing to share why it's important. And I just want to say a little bit more about the event. We are working with many different organizations in the local community to come out and give information to our families. We do get somewhere between 1,000 to 1,200 people that usually attend this event. So it's a, it's a pretty big deal. And so we'll have, we're also kind of partnered with the Bi-National Health Week, so we'll have a lot of different health booths out there. We'll have different activities for the kids. We're trying to partner with Home Depot to hopefully, it's, it looks like it's going to happen, but we're not sure, build us a haunted house. So they're going to have all that going on. And then we'll have a photo booth, we'll have food for sale, some different fundraisers happening at that time. So it's just a lot of people coming together, and it's, and it's all for the kids. So we're pretty excited. So I hope that you all can make it out, really. Like, it's an event to experience. So, okay, well, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Don't wait. This is the proclamation.
Yes, of course.
Normally, I do this first, but you took over the show.
I did.
All right. The City of Riverbank Proclamation, Lights On After School. Whereas Lights On After School is a national celebration of After School Programs and prioritize the importance of the quality After School Programs in the lives of children, family, and communities, and whereas After School Programs provide safe, challenging, engaging, and enriching learning experiences to help children and youth develop their social, emotional, physical, cultural, and academic skills. And whereas After School Programs support working families by ensuring children are safe and productive after regular school days, and, and whereas such programs help build stronger communities by involving students, parents, schools, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationship among youth, families, and adults. And whereas Riverbank Unified School District Project Action After School Care Together in Our Neighborhoods is recognized in our schools and community as a fundamental After School Program dedicated to providing extracurricular activities, academic, and recreational opportunities for students enrichment in a safe and nurturing environment so students may become diverse individuals. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that Friday, October 21st, 2016, is Lights On After School within the City of Riverbank. Signed today.
Beautiful.
Thank you. I'd also like to commend all the teachers who are providing the academics portion of it, because it is a very tough job. I lived with one for such a long time, and it's a, sometimes not a rewarding, but in his retirement, my father gets more rewards on people that he taught 50, 80 years ago than he did while he was teaching them. So congratulations to all of them. And kids, fantastic job. Item 1.2, Update on Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys? Thanks for having me tonight. Just a few updates for you from the fire department. We are starting to initiate some labor negotiations. It's about that time again. And so we're initiating conversations now. Haven't had any formal talks, but we're looking forward to that with our labor group. Our new fire chief, I know you have already met him, we are very excited to have him on board and are really looking forward to moving forward under his direction. He has met, I believe it was the chief who has met with city staff to discuss Crossroads West, and so we've enjoyed and appreciated those conversations as well. We have three new firefighter paramedics who have started in the city of Riverbank, and they started this week, so that's exciting to have them on board as well. And it is officially Fire Prevention Week, so everybody's busy visiting schools and talking with kids and teaching fire safety. That's about it for me, unless you have any questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
And the long-awaited 1.3 Strategic Plan Update.
Yes. On September 29th, the city council and management staff met in order to update the city's strategic plan. Our mission statement, as developed through this process, is the City of Riverbank is committed to providing exceptional municipal services in a fiscally sound and professionally responsible manner for our community. The vision that we hold for our city, the City of Riverbank will be recognized as a premier community where individuals, families, and businesses thrive in a safe and beautiful The city council and management staff also have established some core values that all of our employees take into consideration: professionalism, transparency, teamwork, respectful behavior, fiscal responsibility, integrity, and ethical behavior. During this particular session of the strategic plan, the city council and management staff had the opportunity to review the three-year goals that were established back in 2013. Through this review, we were able to update a few of these goals, and so the new three-year goals for 2016 through 2019 are as follows: achieve and maintain financial stability and sustainability; stabilize city systems; retain and attract businesses; expand economic development; and attract, develop, and retain quality staff. And so the objectives set forth for each of these goals, under the goal of achieve and maintain financial stability and sustainability, will be looking to present the results of the Classification and Compensation Study to the city council for direction. This classification and compensation study will be prepared by an outside consultant and will be the basis for the upcoming labor negotiations that will begin in January. Second, we'll identify financial priorities and goals, and those will be used in order to prepare the fiscal year 2017-18 budget, identify and evaluate alternative revenue sources, and present their findings to the city council. The fourth objective is to explore options to transition to a monthly billing or monthly payment of billings for water, sewer, and garbage, and make a recommendation to the city council for action. The fifth is we would present to the city council for direction an expedited permitting process to facilitate commercial and retail development. Under the goal of stabilizing city systems, we would look to hire a full-time or interim accounting manager to focus on producing expenditure reports and the preparation of payroll. A second, we would establish an accurate online meter reading and billing system. The third, we would begin to maintain and expand the city's website and social media component and identify who is in charge of the website and social media on an ongoing Under the goal of retaining and attract business, we would define the scope of work needed from Opportunity Stanislaus and present the results to the city council for action. A second, we would create an online commercial database. Third, we would present a funding plan to the city manager for the East Riverbank Master Plan. And we, fourth, we would meet with at least 10 local businesses to identify positives and negatives for the business community. The fifth objective is to study the feasibility of allowing online business license renewals and make a recommendation to the city council for action. Sixth, we would develop a networking relationship with existing local businesses to attract other businesses to Riverbank. And seventh, we would study the feasibility of establishing a Business Improvement District, or BID, or a Business Owners Association, and make a recommendation to the city council for direction. A future goal under retain and attract business is to develop a marketing plan for Riverbank and encourage businesses to present to the city council for action. Under the goal of expand economic development, we would look to provide to the city council for consideration a large prospective lease agreement at the Riverbank Industrial Complex. A second, we would provide the city council with an update on the removal of obstacles to commercial development at Patterson and Estelle. Third, provide to the city council an update on the annexation of Crossroads West. Under the goal of attract, develop, and retain quality staff, we look to offer a contract to a candidate for the permanent city manager position. A second, complete an assessment of staffing needs, department by department, and this can be done in conjunction with the Classification and Compensation Study. A third is to determine if specialized customer service training is needed for their employees and present the request to the city manager and the human resource analyst. Fourth is develop a list of methods of rewarding and acknowledging valuable staff. And fifth is to fill the open budgeted positions currently within the city. And with that, our next strategic planning session is on Monday, March 20th, of 2017, and within these next six months, the city staff will be working diligently on making sure that these objectives are met.
Any comments on the strategic plan from... Item 2, Public Comment, No Action Can Be Taken. At this time, a member of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purpose, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council LRA board. Do we have public comment tonight?
Good evening. My name is Vicki Holt, and I'm the branch manager at the Riverbank Library. There's something that's happening tomorrow that I want you to know about. The library's in a process of developing a new strategic plan, and we need lots of input from the community. So we're having a town hall meeting tomorrow at the Riverbank Community Center at 6:00 PM. It goes from 6:00 to 7:00, and there's food. It will help shape the future of your library. Your voice counts in our planning, so I just want to let the community know that they're all invited. And I mentioned this last month, but I just want to tell you that we had our first bilingual storytime this morning, and it was very well received. We had 15 people, which is a good amount of storytime for us. Parents, grandparents, and children enjoyed books both in Spanish and English. So the next one, it'll be every other Tuesday, so the next one is on October 25th, and that's at 10:30 in the morning. Python Ron is coming to the library, and he will be bringing all kinds of very big snakes and other reptiles. It's on October 19th at 3:30. This is a very popular program. It's educational, but it's really a lot of fun. The book club is reading Sunday Silence by Gina B. Nahay. The book club meeting is on the fourth Tuesday of every month, and this month, it's on October 25th at 4:00 PM. We are having a Halloween party on Halloween on Monday, the 31st, and it's going to be from 3:00 to 4:30. The kids will make spooky origami, monster shakers, and mummy piñatas, and they're encouraged to come in costume, and we'll be passing out candy. All the programs at the library are free to the public. It's because of the Eighth of Ascent's dedicated sales text that these library services are available. Please stop by and visit. You are always welcome, and thank you for your time.
God, Mr. Grishy, Riverbank, Mr. Mayor and Council. On the city manager deal that you have for November 1, the last time we had a meeting, I think it was either the teen center or the community center, and they had the three, they whittled down the three candidates, and they presented them, and they had a question and answer. It was really a neat deal to see who was there and, and speak to them, and so on and so forth, before the city council selected them. I was just wondering if you'd have that again this year.
Hello, folks. Say, I may be jumping again. My name's Lester Williams. I live over on Roselle. And the City of Riverbank, they have an ordinance, I guess it's been in compliance since '35, and anyway, it's on the water situation. If your well goes dry, you can't drill a new well. You have to get city water if it's available. Well, the, back in '35, when they imposed this rule, maybe it was all right. Prices weren't so bad. But I, my well just went dry. I've been inquired about, you know, hooking up to the city, and the city doesn't help the people. I mean, I have to come up with almost $20,000, $9,200 for the city, and then almost another $3,000 for the meter and the box that the meter goes to. And then to have a contractor come in and open the road up and hook to the city, we're looking at another $6,000 to $8,000. And I don't know how many people's got that much money just to fork out overnight. I mean, you know, you're going to refinance your property, takes a while to do that. I mean, you know, and you're hauling water to take showers and do everything you got to do. And my reason for being here is I would like for y'all to look this over, this ordinance, and see if you can't change it. You know, either, either help fund it, you know, the people, you put so much down, y'all put a lien on the property, and then so much time to pay it off. But I mean, just to come up with that amount of money at one time is just ridiculous. I don't know how many of y'all can do it. I can't. I just, I work for a living, like the rest of you, but it's still, there's no way that I could come up with that kind of money. But I'm here to ask you folks, somebody check it out and see, because 1935, in 2016, there's a whole lot of difference. So, but I would appreciate it, and I'll be back at the next meeting.
I wasn't going to say nothing tonight. High School Moore, 3848 Patterson Road, but I know that gentleman. He busted his rear working construction, equipment that he owns himself. He lives right across the street from Crossroads, the beginning of Crossroads off of Roselle. When you pull beside, slide into Crossroads, you see a semi truck setting and trailers, that's him. He is about 60 feet from where you're watering plants. He's got to have $20,000 to hook up because his well went dry. This is what we, just, we need a council that will help people in an emergency like this. This ain't a put-up deal. He didn't know what's coming up here. He just barely recognized me. But when I heard... But when I heard what he said and know the help that he needs, you know, do you guys ready to help him? I'd still complain about something else tonight, but boy, it's a better deal. And I changed my mind about complaining about that. But he needs some help, and that's what the city should be known for, is helping the people that live there. And if he don't get any help, and he has to put out twenty grand somehow, then, you know, that's unreal. I wish you would really consider what you're doing here and help him out. Put a pipe under the roads, all it takes, a meter. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rick McGinnis. I live in Riverbank. I've put my camera down, tucked away my press credentials, and I'm here as an unofficial and unrequested representative of the Historical Society. I'm a member of the Historical Society, and I was noticing last week, as the city was preparing downtown for Cheese and Wine, one of the nice things you did for us was you spruced up the grounds of the museum over here and planted some nice new flowers. And it really, really looks nice, and we really appreciate it. So, we'd like to thank you.
Further comments? Bring it back to the council. Does staff have any comments?
With regards to Mr. McRitchie's comments regarding a community forum in order to meet the city council, or the city manager candidates, the City Council can certainly discuss that during their, their close session agenda item. With Mr. Williams and the issues with the well, we will certainly review the ordinance to see what it states and contact Mr. Williams to see what arrangements we might be able to make in order to assist him.
For the open forum, it may be difficult depending on the candidate's request. Before the last one, no one had a problem with letting their boss know that they were going out for another job. That may not be the case this year, so we'll do that by ear.
All right. Moving on to the consent calendar, consisting of item three A, wave readings. Item three B, approval of August fifth, two thousand and sixteen, special city council minutes. Item three B one, approval of the September twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Item three C, a resolution approving the application for grant funds for the California Urban River Grant Program under the Water Quality, Supply, and Infrastructure Improvement Act of two thousand and fourteen. Do I have any comments on the consent calendar? Do I have any comments from the public on the consent calendar? Saying none, I bring it back to the council for a recommendation and/or action.
I make a recommendation that we accept the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, the consent calendar.
Council authority members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Public hearings. Five one. First reading and introduction, introduction by title only of a proposed ordinance, amending chapter seventy-three, traffic schedules of title seven, traffic code of the Riverbank Municipal Code.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As required by the California Vehicle Code, in order for our Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department to enforce our speed limits via the use of radar, we are required to prepare an engineering and traffic study. This engineering and traffic study was prepared by K D Anderson and Associates, and the results of that tonight are being presented by Kathleen Kleek, our Development Services Administration Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. So, tonight, as the interim city manager stated, the first reading of the ordinance amending chapter seventy-three, traffic schedules of title seven, traffic code of the Riverbank Municipal Code. So, the recommendation tonight, staff recommends the City Council introduce ordinance amending chapter seventy-three, traffic schedules of title seven, traffic code of the Riverbank Municipal Code. Based on engineering and traffic surveys, the ordinance amendment recommends changes to speed limits on thirteen street segments in the city of Riverbank. So, speed limits in California are governed by the California Vehicle Code and the two thousand and fourteen California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices outlines standards, guidance, and options for establishing speed limits which can be legally enforced by radar. If a city enforces speed limits by way of radar, Vehicle Code Section four zero eight zero two requires the preparation of an engineering and traffic survey to justify the speed limits on those designated streets. To enforce speed limits through the use of radar, it is legally required that the city review and adjust posted speed limits through a engineering and traffic survey every five years. Speed limits must fall within the eighty-fifth percentile to require no changes. The city would not be required to adjust posted speed limits only if it chooses to no longer monitor vehicle speeds using radar. Failure to enforce local speed limits through the use of radar could lead to significant increases in local speeds. It is our recommendation that the city continue adjusting speed limits through the two thousand and sixteen Engineering and Traffic Study in accordance with the Vehicle Code. The California M U T C D indicates that an engineering and traffic study shall include, among other requirements deemed necessary by the department, consideration of all of the following: prevailing speeds is determined by traffic engineering measures, collision records, highway, traffic, and roadside conditions not readily apparent to the driver. Traffic speeds must be supported by an engineering and traffic study. Otherwise, if speed limits are too low, the city could face liability by setting speed traps. The traffic manual provides that speed limits are generally established at or near the eighty-fifth percentile, which is defined as a speed at or below which eighty-five percent of traffic is currently moving. Under the guidelines in the traffic manual, speed limits should be set at the nearest five miles per hour increment of the eighty-fifth percentile speed. Example, for an eighty-fifth percentile speed of forty-eight miles per hour, the traffic manual suggested the speed limit be set at fifty. If the measured eighty-fifth percentile speed is forty-seven miles per hour, then the suggested speed limit is forty-five. In April two thousand and sixteen, the city contracted with K D Anderson and Associates to complete this study and establish speed limits along sixteen roadways identified by the city's chief of police. The city also solicited comments from the Riverbank Police Chief and Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department, who recommended adjustments to proposed speed limits on River Cove Drive and Squire Wells Way. The results of the engineering traffic study reports, along with police observations, recommend the following changes: decreasing the speed limit on Claus Road between California Street and State Route one oh eight, which is by the Riverbank High School; establishing a speed limit on Antique Rose Way to thirty miles per hour; and increasing the speed limit on eleven street segments. So, here are the, there's all thirteen of them on here. And then, as you can see, California Street between Claus Road and Snedeker from twenty-five to thirty. And then Clarabelle Road between Oakdale Road and City Limits, forty-five to fifty. Claus Road between Clarabelle and California Street, forty-five to fifty. My eyes, it's hard to see. Morel Road between Oakdale Road and Roselle, twenty-five to thirty-five. Oakdale Road between Morel Road and Patterson, forty to forty-five. Oakdale Road between Clarabelle and Morel, forty-five to fifty. Roselle Avenue between Clarabelle and Patterson, thirty-five to forty. Santa Fe Street between Seventh Street and Claus, twenty-five to thirty. Snedeker between California and Santa Fe, twenty-five to thirty-five. Squire Wells between Morel and Clarabelle, twenty-five to thirty. And Terminal between the Southern City Limits and Patterson Road, twenty-five to thirty. And then Antique Rose Way, currently, there's no posted speed limit there, so the proposed speed limit is thirty miles an hour. So, this is kind of a map that shows the streets that where the proposed speed limit changes are. And then these following streets, First Street, Crawford, Patterson, from Calendar one oh eight to Central, and then River Cove Drive from Briar Cliff to Burneville, and Santa Fe from Claus to Snedeker. Those were studied, and the recommendation is to keep the speed limits the same. So, staff recommends that the City Council find that the speed limits identified in the proposed ordinance for each street segment will facilitate the orderly movement of vehicular traffic, will be reasonable and safe, and will be in compliance with the traffic manual and California law based on each engineering and traffic study. Any comments or questions? Also, the chief is here tonight, so if you have any questions for the chief, he's available to answer questions as well.
I had a question. Is it, after we do the study, is it mandatory that we do have to change our speed limits? Is that a mandatory requirement?
It is a requirement if we want to use radar.
Or more comments? I'd like to open it for the public. This is a public hearing.
Mary Gardiola, I am at forty thirty-six California, which is the first one on the list. It's twenty-five now, and if you park in front of my house at any time, they're not doing thirty. They're doing forty or fifty in that short little stretch. There's people on that walking path. I can't even pull up my driveway half the time. And my street is not a two-lane street. It's really a one-lane street, and you add the potholes, and you increase the speed, I think it's just a disaster. I mean, I was shocked when I saw that they wanted to increase the speed on California. I get the study, I understand it, but I don't think California and that two blocks, the roads horrible, should be increased.
Haskell Moore, thirty-eight, forty-eight Patterson Road. I don't think you should be changing the speeds, make the speed limit different when a couple of streets are running horizontal with one another, but three or four blocks away. People get used to driving one speed. I know I do. And I live on Patterson Road between Tina Lane and Eighth Street. And I watch a lot of NASCAR. Years ago, I was involved in all racing. And I'll tell you what, I've been laying in my bed one night, and you know what, you know how fast a vehicle is going when you hear a woof, that's all you hear? That's exceeding a hundred miles an hour. I didn't hear no tires, I didn't hear no engine, I just heard a woof by my window. It's thirty-five miles an hour right there. And they don't always run that fast, but they drive a good fifty, fifty-five miles an hour in the street, day and night. I'm a two-block from the donut circle, we call it, of Stanislaus and Seventh Street, Stanislaus and Sixth Street. I don't know if you notice or not, there's always three or four donuts there, burnouts. And I tried to catch them a couple of times, get license plate numbers, and the people that were there, what happened, they didn't write nothing down, and I stopped asking them, and they didn't, you know, because, but one night, one of them crashed a house, about six months ago, I think. But that's one of about ten that do it. But I don't think making speed limits slower or faster is going to help a problem you have. But I do know the California street that she's talking about, twenty-five is as fast as you want to go there. There's, there's a lot of kids there, a lot of cars, a lot of families, and it's pretty crowded right there. Thank you.
Further public comment? I close the public comment, bring it back to the council for comments and/or recommendations. I have a question. Do we have to accept everyone if we accept the report, or can we pick and choose? The thing I don't want to give up is using radar. If we reject it, we give up radar. This is not the best way government should operate. So, you're asking us to give up radar if we give up, if we put lives at risk. California Street is one. I don't like the one between Oakdale and Roselle, Long Morel. You have three stop signs there, you have the ducks. I had a little kid run out in front of me today, got away from his mother with going after a duck. I'm sorry. Sometimes you look at the laws, what they want us to do, and sometimes they don't make sense.
Mayor, and to answer your question, the, these were individual reports that were done, so you can pick and choose, as you stated. I believe that the ones we don't choose to go ahead with, if we didn't find a reason to change that speed limit and talk to the, the transportation engineer, and we've already talked to him about a couple that we were able to adjust, that you wouldn't be able to use radar on that particular street. But the ones that you agree with and were to approve tonight, you would be able to use the radar.
I know speed limits don't guarantee speed or safety, because then on Squire Wells, no, on Homewood, they barrel down as fast as they want to. You're not the only place that has donut circle or, there's a couple right there. And, you know, by saying, okay, they're breaking the law, we're going to increase it, so they won't be breaking the law as much to allow them to, well, I can now do thirty-five, because everybody knows they're not going to stop me if I'm just going five, six miles an hour over.
If Kylie, do you have any comments you'd like to make with regards to how your staff might be able to handle a situation such as not being able to use radar on those streets?
It's just a recommendation that we use drones. Probably not very practical, wouldn't be well received. The, the issue with not being able to use radar or LiDAR is that we'd be limited to pacing vehicles, and, and when I talk about pacing, what we would be required to do is basically get up behind that vehicle, gain speed with it, and then maintain speed with it for a short distance to perceive that it was not, we weren't gaining on it, it wasn't gaining on us, then we can estimate the speed of that vehicle. The danger of that is now you have two vehicles moving at a speed faster than what we would like to see in the neighborhood. So, open roadways, main thoroughfares, that's, that's a better technique to use in a lot of these areas that we are trying to get, set speed limits for. So, it's, it's just not as effective of a tool, and it's, frankly, it's not as safe for us to use. So, radar and LiDAR are the preferred methods. So, that, hopefully that makes sense, and if I need to clarify further, let me know. If there are any other questions, let me know.
Is the area that, that our audience member mentioned on California Avenue, is that frequently patrolled? I mean, is that a known area that's difficult in terms of speeding?
It's patrolled. It's not as frequently patrolled as a lot of other areas. I can tell you, you know, Morel, Roselle, all those areas get extra attention because of the problems associated. And, you know, a lot of these, if, there's a reason that we are not the primary in terms of setting speeds, because if, if it were up to us, we'd just tell everybody to drive fifteen miles an hour. Because we, you know, we're the ones that deal with the negative fallout from speed when there's a collision. So, we, we have our biases, we understand that. But there, every street that I've seen where there's an increase, I can think of, you know, I can think of an incident or two where I, I like to see it, you know, twenty miles an hour less than what's proposed, but I realize that I'm, I am, my preferences are skewed by my past experiences. So, and at the end of all this, we have to have efficient traffic movement in the city as well as safety, so.
Vision Zero is a national program looking at trying to reduce, to eliminate, traffic accidents, especially those with fatalities. They're trying to zero accidents, making the streets as safe as possible. And our complete streets, that's one of the goals of, of the city, is to make it accident-free. In this project here, I know you can use the LiDAR or the radar to tick it, but will this help prevent?
Well, when you're talking about zero occurrences, I mean, you- Well, when you're talking about zero occurrences, I mean, you, that's obviously, you're talking about through design, correct?
Design and through management.
Because when you talk about management, enforcement, you're talking about compliance, and zero collisions would require 100% compliance, basically. And even then, you factor in the human element, somebody can be well-intending and trying to, can be driving the speed limit. And that child that you mentioned, you know, I've seen a lot of tragedies in my 23 years where people can be well within the law and the tragedy still occurs, so that's a noble goal. I don't know if it can ever be obtained.
All right, thank you. At this time, do we have to tell you which ones that we want to adjust, or can we accept this and adjust it at the next meeting?
You can't have a substantial change between the two readings, so if there's some concern about that, I'd recommend you just continue this first hearing rather than change between the-
Hey, I'd like to, I drove on some of them, I didn't drive on all of them. I did not drive on California. I want to drive on them and come back, and maybe we can have a discussion on whether or not we, unless there is three votes here that want to proceed with this, that's fine.
No, I have concerns. That's why I asked if we just have to approve it. I would like for us to have further discussion on it.
I have concerns also about the safety issues. I'd like to look at it a little more, too.
That being the case, I'd recommend you make a motion to continue the public hearing for the first reading.
May I have that motion?
I still move. We continue it.
We have our motion to continue in a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez-
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you for the work. I know it's, it's by the law that when we want to be able to maintain safety, and I don't want to be able to follow a car that's going 50 miles an hour for, you know, 200 feet, and then slams on the corner, does a wheel, I mean, that would be, you know, kind of ridiculous, two cars trying to do, that's be what-
Like the disaster.
Yeah. I thought it was the Dodge Brothers, but that's okay. All right. Thank you very much. Item 5-2, public hearing. 2015 Urban Water Management Plan, Public Draft Review.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we have Michael Rydel, accompanied by Neil Caldwell, who will be presenting the public draft for review of the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan.
Evening, Mayor. Council members, I'd like to introduce you to Neil Caldwell from KESN Engineering, the principal that went ahead and put this update together for us.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, Neil Caldwell, Principal Engineer with Kelso-Sinac-Nudeck. I'd like to ask your consideration or indulgence here this evening. I am on the tail end, hopefully, of a pretty bad case of bronchitis, so my voice is a little bit different here than normal. I'm going to go through a brief presentation on the 2015 update to your Urban Water Management Plan. I'd like to start off with a little bit of background. The city, as an urban water supplier, which means your public water system serves at least 3,000 acre-feet of water per year, or serves at least 3,000 connections, is required to prepare an Urban Water Management Plan. This document, which is based on an act established in 1983, the Urban Water Management Planning Act, has obviously been a requirement for many years. It has to be updated every five years during the years that end in 0 and 5, so right now we're finishing the 2015 update. Although the Urban Water Management Planning Act was first established in 1983, its original form did not have a lot of incentive or really teeth behind it requiring agencies to prepare these documents. So, over the years, there's been a number of changes in the act that put more strings to the document, and pretty much every agency that meets this criteria as an urban water supplier now prepares these documents. It's become much more highlighted, and as I'm sure this council is very well aware of during the recent drought as well, to be an important document for an agency to review and consider as it manages its water system. One of those major components that was a change in 2009 is legislation under SBX 7-7. This is an important element that added a fairly major component that was incorporated into the 2010 version of your Urban Water Management Plan. And under that SBX 7-7 legislation, the city is required to set a goal for at least a 20% reduction in water use by the year 2020. And so this document goes through and evaluates your status in that process. Through the process of updating your document, we have reached out to the counties of both Samuel Keane and Stanislaw to give them notice that the city was updating its documents as a requirement of the Urban Water Management Planning Act. Since you do have water that can be supplied to both, both areas, that we reached out to both of them to give notice. Otherwise, specific notice tends to be limited to other public agencies that the city or the water system would supply. And so in this case, there was no other notice that had to be sent out. From there, we go through and we update the historical documentation to prepare the updated report, so we look at what has occurred since 2010 up through 2015. The document that you have, instead of public draft, has been made available to the public. A public notice was posted of its availability, and of course, at this hearing, you can receive comments on the document.
Before you go on, is this the only public hearing?
Correct. This, and then your adoption hearing. So, this would be the case where you would receive and consider input to the document, allow staff to consider that either from the public or from the council, of course, and then bring that document back for presentation, for approval, or for further discussion. Now, over and above just being a document that sits on a shelf, there are some uses, there's some good beneficial uses of an Urban Water Management Plan. One thing, and this is where the strings come in nowadays, almost all water-related loans, low-interest loans and grants from the state require compliance with Urban Water Management Planning Act, meaning you have to have an up-to-date and approved, Department of Water Resources-approved document. So, that would be a requirement if the city were to pursue any grant funding for water system improvements, wastewater improvements, any low-interest loans that in particular are administered and managed by Department of Water Resources or the State Water Resources Control Board. A second benefit of the Urban Water Management Plan is that it becomes a tool that is used in your land use planning. So, if you're to consider general plan updates, amendments that trigger things like water supply assessments, the Urban Water Management Plan can be a document that's referred to and used in the assessment of availability of water for those discretionary actions. Likewise, the environmental documents associated with those and other discretionary actions that deal with water can refer to your Urban Water Management Plan in terms of making conclusions about the availability of water to serve certain needs. Lastly, the uses that we've identified here, this does become a document that can be used by your local groundwater sustainability agency under the Sigma legislation as they prepare their groundwater sustainability plan. So, this can be information that they refer to and look at, what are the projections on annual water use by the City of Riverbank? Some changes that we made in the 2015 plan from the 2010, water loss has to be reported under a very specific formula. There's a calculation spreadsheet that was developed by the American Waterworks Association that has very specific input. We use that as required by amendments to the act to project what kind of losses, system losses there may be. The system losses are things like hydrant flushing, broken lines that have leaks, in some cases, but truly not a case for you, since you just went through the meter replacement project, but old systems have old meters may be inaccurate, things like that. So, we made an update to that. That calculation is in spreadsheet form, so the city has that now, and you'll be able to use that to make annual adjustments as you need to. We adjusted the population information based on the 2010 census data. Number three, we've checked in on the interim goals in terms of the 20% reduction by 20, year 2020. So, 2015 is what we call a compliance year. You have to check in and see how the city's doing along those lines. Number four, DMMs, demand management measures. These are the things that the city commits to implement to promote water conservation. The revisions to the act provide for reorganization of those, the very specific elements that you have to deal with, things like rebates, et cetera. And then, number five, we incorporated information from your recently completed self-certification regarding your availability of groundwater. That became a component of our assessment of what supplies would be available under single and multiple dry year conditions. Some major conclusions, here's the population projection. We started with the 2010 census population and made a 1.6% straight-line projections consistent with the calculations in the prior document. However, the percentage is different because we used a wider set of data. The 2010 update used a 3.3% population projection, which I think was a little bit skewed based on the, kind of, the 2005, 2006 growth rates. So, the 1.6 more reflects your longer-term average growth rate, and I think it's a reasonable projection in terms of population. Using the population as a basis with some baseline demands, we then projected what the potable water demands would be in acre-feet per year. So, the table right below, 2015 projection, 3,878 acre-feet per year, and then 2020, 4,165 acre-feet per year. Those are the projected demands. And these are all, it's very systematically spelled out in the Urban Water Management Planning Act, and the tables that we prepare have to meet the specific Department of Water Resources format, so we used all those. Now, on the supply projections, we take the demands and we have to match them up with supplies. In your case, that wound up being a fairly easy process, as we had gone through and looked at your groundwater situation, even under drought conditions, that the city, actually in your wells, you saw a bit of a rebound in groundwater levels in the local wells. We did a projection, still on a conservative basis, assuming a moderate degree of decline, did not identify any reduction in the ability of the city to pump groundwater to meet your demands. So, our projection out to the year 2035, both for average year and then single and multiple drier conditions, we're concluding that the city has a good water supply to meet those conditions. One thing that the plan doesn't really address very well, it's based on annual production, but your facilities, the number of wells, the size of your tank, and the pumping capacity of your booster pumps, those have to deal with peak conditions. So, this doesn't mean that you don't have to do any wells. You'll likely have to continue down the path of implementing your water system master plan and have additional wells as new development comes into play. But that's mostly driven by meeting those peak demands, you know, peak summer day demands, for example. On the conservation goals, we also looked at the projected goals and where the city is today. In your 2010 Urban Water Management Plan, you had an interim goal of a demand per person, this is gallons per capita per day, so how many gallons an individual person would use in a day. You had a goal of 182 gallons per person per day, with a 2020 goal of 165 gallons per person per day. Those were consistent with this 20% reduction in use. When you look at your 2015 data, you're already at 147 gallons per person per day, so you've met that, and that's, in large part, you have very good efforts by the city, city staff. Certainly, the drought was a big component of that in terms of awareness by people to reduce water use. And so you've met both your interim and your 2020 goals. So, next step, at this point, we're presenting the draft report, receiving comments from the council, any comments from the public. Take those and then consider them, see if we need to address any of those in terms of a revised document. We can bring then the revised document back for the October 25 meeting, present that to the council if you're ready at that point to approve the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan update. Once you approve it, then it gets, then we submit it to the Department of Water Resources. This is an element of the process that I don't think quite works, because then you, as a board, you're going to, as a council, you're going to approve the document, then it goes to Department of Water Resources, they may have comments to it. I doubt in this case that they will. I think it's pretty well up-to-date, there's not a lot of questionable elements to it. But the Department of Water Resources then has the ability to make comments on it and then send it back. There's not a real good process for how that comes back to a council, for example, for communication, but I anticipate that you would have like a staff report at that point of what comments did come back, if any. Otherwise, they can just approve it, then you have an approved Urban Water Management Plan, gets posted to the Department of Water Resources website, and posted it on the city website as well. From there, then you continue to implement your demand management measures as outlined in the report. So, at this point, I am here available to answer any questions by the council, or if any questions that you'd like me to address from the public, I'll be available as well.
Thank you, we may have some later. This is a public hearing, I open the public comment.
Lot of stuff in what he presented, and I'm not sure that I understand all of it, but the 20% reduction per capita by 2020 is based on, that would be based on 2010 data. Got to reduce it from something, so it's 2010. And then, they put in a deal for the increase in population since that time.
Based on per capita, it's on gallons per capita per day. So, if we were at 185, our goal was 162 or whatever, and now we're at 147 or so, so we're below even that, and we're placing upon ourselves an additional 10% reduction.
Now, that, the gallons per person is a little bit scary, because if you have one person and they have to irrigate it all, it's going to be a big number. If somebody has five in the family sitting on the same piece of ground, irrigate the same amount, it's going to be a lot less, because the biggest thing, as we've been told over and over, 75% of the water use is irrigating the lawns, which we do two times a week. But, again, you have to have some standards, and I guess that's one, but it's a lot different if you have somebody in a thousand-square-foot house, and there's five people in a thousand-square-foot house, and there's one person. That one person's never going to be able to meet that. The other thing is that I still haven't been told, as many times I've been up here, why we, and again, we had another report in the paper, why we are up when everyone else is down, and yet, when you look at our water use or per capita, so on and so forth, it's in good shape. So, what's the skinny here? Are we ever going to get to the answer to that? And it's not, Mr. Mayor, we have old pipes, because Escalon has them, and Oakdale has them, and the city, Modesto has them. So, I don't know why we are always getting dinged when everybody else is 30 or 40% under, and we're 20% over. At one time, in the wintertime, we were 40% up over our previous standard, and everybody else was 35, 36% under. So, I've never been able to understand that. So I've never been able to understand that. So when we look at per capita, we look like shining stars. When the bee comes out, we look like we're water hogs, and I don't understand that. Why is that? And I've never been able to get an answer for that. So that's another.
Break on that and answer that. It's based on 2013, where we had already started our reduction from 2010.
Well, I understand that, but it can't be that different. A difference between 40% here in savings, or 35% savings and 20% here, I don't buy that. That's just, it's impossible.
Well, that's the figures. That's the figures. 2013 was an anomaly for us. We had conserved a lot, and that's what the governor wanted, not 2010, where we started.
I could understand if it was 10%, but when I see 40 and 50% differences between us and someone else, and I can't believe that someone else in 2013, or whenever it was, hadn't done something else. So if we did it, why didn't some other people do it? Was the weather was cooler, what happened there?
Percentages versus gallons per person per day is a big story, when our gallons per person per day is approximately the same, but our usage is up?
Well, then I expect to see something from this group to the Modesto B explaining that our gallons per use are below anyone else in the known county. Because it's just, I just hate reading that miserable thing. Every time I pick up the paper, Riverbank's getting slammed.
All right, thank you. Any further public comment? Saying none, I bring, I close public comment, bring it back to the council for comments and our recommendations.
One comment that I just noticed.
No, it doesn't. I think this is based on 2015, so.
It doesn't matter.
No, it should not matter. But I'll let the experts talk to that. provide questions or comments to them, to those, and plan for the second hearing. Accept it, and for the second hearing on what, the 25th?
Over 25th. Except item 6.1.
About 5.2.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I on the wrong one?
Yeah, 5.2.
Sorry, 5.2.
No wonder he didn't have any questions.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to accept item 5.2 and a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Before we move on, we, I know you've talked to the B about it, when they asked me, and I told them what our water usage was compared to the surrounding areas, they didn't care. They only care about that one year.
Yeah, even when we had the discussion after we did our self-certification and the B contacted me, and I gave them all that information.
They ignored it.
Yeah, the only statement that they made was, I made the statement of, when they were asking me, were we going to continue to conserve? And I said, definitely, because there's still a drought. That's the only caption you've seen in the paper, was a Public Works superintendent said, we're still in a drought. That's apparent.
Good observation.
You know, it wasn't tough to do, because the state keeps hammering that. So, yeah, it's, they ignore. They only want to go after the bad, they don't want to print anything on the good. And I've had a couple of conversations with them concerning that matter, and it just falls on deaf ears.
Moving on to new business, item 6.1, the City of Riverbank Water Conservation Update.
Tonight, Michael Riedel, our Public Works Superintendent, will be providing the city council and our residents an update on the city's water conservation measures.
Bad old picture for a newly painted tank.
Newly painted.
Just couldn't let that one pass. As you can see, and the water staff is the painters and the artistes. So obviously, the lettering was already there, but we had to shadow it and all that good stuff.
It is a nice job. I thought they did a beautiful job.
Excellent job on it, too. And it actually fell in really good for us, because one of the things that we were dinged on by our inspection, by the State Water Board, when they came in, they said the tank needed to be painted. So when I sent a response back to them, I sent them a nice color picture of our tank. Worked out really well. So anyway, so, good evening tonight. I'm here to talk to you about our conservation plan and what we like to do. A little bit of background, I think everybody probably pretty much knows about this, but you can see that in January, the governor proclaimed a state of emergency for the drought. April, the governor proclaimed a continued state of emergency, and then that exists through the state of California, and then gave the water board the ability to enforce their conservation. At that point in time, the, as we all know, the State Water Board came up with a conservation standard, which ours was 32%, based on the year 2013. I have yet to have anybody explain to me why 2013. I've asked that question, if I've asked it once, of water board personnel, I've asked it 100 times. And nobody can tell me, well, because this reason, or we just grabbed it out of the air, or whatevers, and I think it's just they decided that was a good year, and that's the reason why. That's my conclusion. And as we were going along, we weren't able to meet the conservation standard, so as everyone knows, in December, we were issued a conservation order to, because we weren't able to meet their reductions. So as we continue along in May of this year, in response to the persistent but less severe drought conditions throughout California, the State Water Board amended their emergency regulation, and that's where we came into this self-certifying our supply. We had to be able to show the water board that we could sustain the water supply for the next three years if it continues to be in a drought. Through our self-certification on that, they would set our conservation rate, or our conservation percentage of reduction. As you are all aware of, the public may not be, that self-certification came up with a 0% conservation rate. Now, mind you, the year before, we were being hammered because we weren't meeting that 32%. So if I sound a little jaded, it's because I am. So as we go along with that, they did the self-certification, which became effective June 1, so our current conservation rate is 0% according to the state of California. During that timeframe, as Neil was alluding to in the 2015 urban water management plan update, we have actually met and exceeded our 2010 20% reduction by 2020, or the year 2020, in 2015. If we've exceeded the 20%, we've actually gone to 26%. We've reduced our water use between 2010 and 2015 by 26%. So that kind of goes along with what the mayor is saying about, we were already well within the reduction to get that to work. So I kind of put together a quick little graph here, based from 2014, 2015, and 2016, and you can see that I am showing you the average residential per gallon per use per day, in other words, per person per day. So in January 2014, we were at 77 gallons per person per day. Now, mind you, this is the average. This isn't the set amount, this is the average. You could have some homes that are using 50, and some homes that are using 100, but this is the average at 77. 2015, you can see it went up by a gallon, and in 2016, you can see it went down by six gallons. Now, probably you can attribute that 2015 to 2016 reduction in some areas to the fact that we really started, in 2014, we really started enforcing the water conservation. We started in June of 2015. So if you look at the numbers, and you can see in 2014, we used 229 gallons, in 2015, we used 171 gallons, in 2016, we used 158 gallons in June. So you can see the reductions. We still have, where it will rise up on us occasionally, but you can see that in August, which is one of the numbers Mr. McRitchie alluded to, we were 219 gallons per person per day in 2014. 2015, we went to 177, and in 2016, we're at 176. So because they based our usage on that 2013 year, is the reason why we were not able to achieve their conservation standard. Had they based it on data that we could supply them, as we did in the self-certification, then it would have been a whole different ballgame. And I think that's the reason why the state, because there was so much uproar over their conservation standard, the state went to this self-certification program.
Before we go on, if you take a look at February this year, we had no rain at all. March was very, very dry, and that's why we had an increase. I don't know why April, April was about average, but you could tell the differences between when you have a very dry month in the middle of the winter, you know, the use difference.
If you remember that spreadsheet that I put together that showed the mean, medium, and high temperatures, when you take a look at this, the basing these numbers off of it, you can see the correlation to it. All you got to do is look at the temperature in the rainfall. So, as we're going along with this, so this is kind of where we're at today. So my recommendations for our current program is that it would stay the same. In other words, our current municipal code, and the way we have it listed on our water conservation program, in other words, the watering days, times, that, to remain the same. I would also recommend that we reduce our water consumption per person per day on the 10% average above and beyond the 20% that we were required by 2020. So what I would like to see by the year 2020, we would actually, if we add another 10%, we'll have reduced it by 36%. And I think that's wholly doable.
Are there any questions, comments from the public? Saying none, I bring it back. We have two parts on this one. Did you want to do something on 6.1?
Well, if it's broken.
Just to continue the enforcement of the current water policies?
I move that we continue with the enforcement of the current water use, water use policies.
And to set the conservation goal.
Conservation goal of an additional 10% reduction by 2020.
Very good. And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve item 6.1 to continue the enforcement and to set the conservation goal for additional 10%.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Continuing, item 7.1, staff comments, please.
Just a few comments on my behalf. I did want to let the city council and the residents know that the finance department, in conjunction with the water department staff, have begun a water meter audit. What we're currently doing is a two-week review, daily review, of about 10 homes around the city, where we are physically going out, looking at the meter, taking photographs of the meter, and then comparing the data that's listed on the meter with the data that we receive in our software. What we want to make sure is that the meter itself is capturing the correct information, and then being transferred correctly into the finance department. At this point in time, with the data that's been submitted thus far, we haven't noted any discrepancies, nor have the water department staff noted any issues with the water meters themselves. But we will continue the audit and bring back some results to the city council. I also wanted to take an opportunity to give many thanks to Sue and her staff for all of the work on our 40th Annual Cheese and Wine. It was a very well-attended event. I also heard a lot of good feedback on some of the additional items that were added this year to the event, so kudos to her and her staff, as well as kudos to our water department staff, and to our planning and building manager, Donna Kinney, for all of their efforts in beautifying our city. Donna, the day before the cheese and wine, or the day we were off, she actually went around herself through the city and took down any garage sale signs, or yard sale signs, or illegal signs that were posted in the city's right-of-way, and just wanted to thank her for all of her efforts there. And with that, we have both Sue and Chief Kylie, who will be giving us comments today on the cheese and wine itself. So Sue, if you'd like to go first.
Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to give a quick report that we did have a successful, safe event. I wanted to thank the sheriff's department and fire, who worked closely with us to make sure it was a safe event. Also, Public Works, they patched all the little dents in the sidewalk that they could see, and they worked hard helping us as well. The Chamber of Commerce acted as the information booth, and that was very helpful, helping people find their way around. There are some improvements, obviously, that we want to make. I don't think we still have the festival where we want it to be. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with council, is come back in November, maybe the second week, or the second council meeting, and give a report on how we have done over the three years, now that we've done the festival for three years, and maybe some options are where we might go with this festival, and some recommendations. As far as financially, we have not, I know it was a big risk when we took this festival on, we didn't lose a lot of money this time, we didn't generate a lot of revenue, so we're kind of holding our own. So that's good, but I know the potential of generating more revenue is there as well. So if I could just have some time to look at more of the input we received, and kind of put together the options, and maybe the second meeting in November, if that's okay, come back. Okay, so Chief Kylie.
This year's festival was the most peaceful that I can recall, having worked. We had no public intoxication arrests, we had no arrests for fighting. The only incident that we had was a 15-year-old that was causing a disturbance, and then was asked to leave by security, refused to leave the event. This juvenile was also on probation, so their probation was violated, and they were arrested for trespass, but had nothing to do with the alcohol or the nature of the event, it was just the honoriness of the juvenile. So, that's it.
That concludes staff comments.
Add one other comment you were going to make.
So in the future, we will actually thank you to council member Leanne Jones Cruz, to the mayor, and to Darlene. There's some of the discussions we held at our League of California Conference that we attended in Long Beach. We will be beginning to host several YouTube videos that will discuss our water billing. We'll also take the opportunity to discuss how our meters work, how the program will work, and eventually, once residents are able to start viewing their water usage on their phones and via our online applications, and how those functions will work. And so we'll be releasing a series of videos to our YouTube channel that we currently have, as well as to Facebook and Twitter, so that the residents have an opportunity to view those.
All right. Now, council comments, from council member Jones Cruz, please.
I just wanted to say a couple things this evening, that I just wanted to thank all the participants that participated in the strategic plan. I know it took some time out of your day, some time out of your days, and I appreciate all of your input in that, and I think we have a good plan to go forward, and I'm always excited once we get that going. It's just a neat opportunity to kind of come and work together as a cohesive group to take our city and move it forward. So I just wanted to thank all of you that were there, and continue the efforts with those. I did get a chance to attend the California League of Cities Conference last week, and again, I think it was well worth my time to go. Two things that I kind of took away from the conference were, they had a guest speaker that talked about Build a Block, and it was kind of an interesting... that talked about Build a Block, and it was kind of an interesting presentation that he did. He kind of took a blighted section of their town. It was in a, oh, it just went out of my head. I want to say Texas.
Yes.
Okay.
Dallas.
Dallas, I was going to say Dallas. Then I thought, no, I don't know if it was or not. Just flew right out of there. But it was just an interesting concept, and one of the things that he said that just kind of resonated was to start small. And I know that sounds kind of contrary to what you would think, but he had some interesting thoughts about starting small with one block, one block sidewalk, one block, and it was just a really interesting concept, so I appreciated that. I wanted to thank the folks for the Cheese and Wine Festival, and also, I'm happy to see that the sidewalks going in. Mr. Jones, down on your neck of the neighborhood over there. And so I had quite a few comments tonight, not usually, but so thank you for the time, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Just like to encourage people to volunteer this month a little more. There'll be a lot of activities going on in the city. Your help will be appreciated. And I'd also like to thank the staff for everything that they do. Our librarian, especially in the city, is staff, but she's doing a great job with our library. I know because I used to run some libraries when I was a teacher. So everybody keep working hard and let's make the city better.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbie Martinez.
My comments for the night, also, would like to echo the comments about the cheese and wine. I thought it was very successful. And to just give some information about the conference, that what I took away was that the drone situation, there is a lot more legislation that's coming. A lot of cities are experiencing issues with the drones, and there is, I want to thank the students that came and gave a presentation for the after-school program. It's very, very important that, I think, that we support that, the community supports that program. And the Stanislaus Elder Abuse Prevention Alliance event is going to be held on Friday, October 28, from 9 to 1 at our community center, and I think that's it.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
I think my colleagues have covered just about everything that I wanted to mention this evening, so I'm good.
All right, I want to encourage everyone to go to the town hall meeting tomorrow. I've already spoke with Diane and told her that I would not be there, but I'll see her just prior to the event. I have another meeting across the county. I want to thank Sue, fantastic job with the cheese and wine. I know it's not a laid-back event for you. You're very intense with it. I want to thank your staff, especially Juanita and the dancing horses. They were magnificent, and they're bigger than my horse. I have horse envy. And I want to thank my colleagues at the, and you, Mayor Sellef, for the efforts that we had at the California League of Cities Conference. We had a lot of discussions after each of the meetings, you know, what were the important things coming away. One of them was, we need to be aggressive in obtaining all of our funds that we have given up in the past through concessions, not be as easygoing, because it does affect everyone. For example, if we say we're going to pay, let someone pay someone $20,000 to connect his water, that is now spread-loaded through everybody. So we have to figure out the best way of retrieving all of our general fund subsidies that are out there. I also want to take a look at the amount of per capita that we are spending in the city and by sections, how much we're receiving per capita. So just by cities, for example, some have lighting and landscaping, which contributes directly to, others do not. And there's another section that's, have the CFD where they pay for everything. So we want, I want to see what the disparity is, present it to the council, and see what ideas we have about balancing those costs throughout the city. And with that, I do want to thank the children, too, and look forward to the 21st, where we'll have the after-school program at California School. With that, we're going to go into closed session, consisting of LRA, item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of Government Code 54956.9 to potential cases. Item 8.2, public employment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957-Braavo-1, position, title, city manager. Item 8.3, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9-Alfa. Name of case, Barnum Construction, Inc., versus the City of Riverbank, Court of Appeals of California, 5th District, case number F-058692, and case number F-059499. Before we go into closed session, the public has an opportunity to speak on these matters for up to five minutes. Do I have anyone from the public? Saying none, we adjourn for closed session. Item 9, consisting of item 9.1, report on closed session, LRA, item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2, report on closed session, item 8.2, public employment, direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.3, report from closed session, item 8.3, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, direction has been provided to staff. Okay, with that, we adjourn the meeting. Next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, October 25.